All right, we're all set. Welcome, everyone, to the 2023 Warren County Reorganization Meeting Open Public Meetings Act.
Adequate notice of this meeting of January 1st, 2023 was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by forwarding a schedule of this special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to the Warren County Clerk, the Star Ledger, and Daily Record, and by posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board in the office of the Board of County Commissioners. Formal action may be taken by the Board of County Commissioners at this meeting.
Thank you. Pastor Hoff, come up and lead us.
Thank you. As we pray, I just want to remind us of one really awesome truth from the Word of God. Romans 13 tells us that there is no authority except from God, and that those that exist have been instituted by God. And then it makes this reference. It says that those that serve in government are servants of God for our good. And I think it's interesting to think that through this morning as we meet, that that idea of being a public servant is something that is rooted in, really, in the plan of God for government, to bring peace and to protect our flourishing. So let's pray together for these folks this morning. Our Father, we are thankful that we can come into your presence, thankful for those that have been given the gift of public service, and we thank you that you are deeply involved, intimately involved, in the selection of each of these individuals through the divine ordained means that has been used in our country. We're grateful for the country that we have the freedom to live in. Thank you for the sacrifice of those that are sworn in today, for the willingness to be public servants, and as they do their task, I pray, God, that it would be done remembering that we are servants of God for the good of this community. And we trust that that will be done over the years to come as these fulfill their appointments. We pray these blessings in the name of Jesus and all God's people said.
Amen.
Please remain standing. The acts salute to the flag.
God bless America, and we are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the certification of election of Holly Mackey, read by Emily Swanson, please.
I have the certificate of election, a statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county of Warren on the 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2022 for the election of county clerk. The said Board does determine that at the above-mentioned election, Holly Mackey was elected by the majority of votes cast. I do certify that the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the determination of the Board of Canvassers therein mentioned as relates to the county clerk therein mentioned. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the county of Warren to be affixed this 21st day of November in the year of our Lord 2022, signed by Gloria A. Decker, Chairman of the Board of County Canvassers, and attested by myself, Emily J. Swanson, Warren County Deputy Clerk.
Thank you. Next, oath of office, Holly Mackey, Warren County Clerk, by the Honorable Judge Kevin Shanahan.
All right, repeat after me. I, Holly Mackey.
I, Holly Mackey.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And so the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Warren County Clerk.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the county of Warren as county clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It is official. Thank you, just real quick, you know, because we want to keep this moving. Um, I really appreciate everybody's faith in me in the last five years, um, for this this opportunity to serve for the next five. Looking forward to it, um, looking forward to everything it brings, and let's hope to God we don't have another 2020. But thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have the certification of election, James J. McDonald, County Sheriff, read by Ms. Mackey.
A state of the certificate of election, a statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to the election held in the county of Warren on the 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2022 for the election of county sheriff. The said Board does determine at the above-mentioned election, James J. McDonald, Sr., was elected by the majority of votes cast. I do certify that the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the determination of the Board of Canvassers therein mentioned as relates to the office of county sheriff therein mentioned. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the county of Warren to be affixed on this 21st day of November in the year of our Lord 2022, signed by Gloria A. Decker, Chairman of the Board of County Canvassers, and attested to by myself, Holly Mackey, Warren County Clerk.
Next, we have the certification of election, Jason J. Sarnowski, Commissioner.
I actually am going to do mics. We're going to pop mics.
Sure, you can do mics next.
Thank you. Changing up the program.
I see that.
You're welcome. Certificate of election, a statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county of Warren on the 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2022 for the election of county surrogate. The said Board does determine that at the above-mentioned election, Michael J. Dougherty was elected by the majority of votes cast. I do certify that the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the determination of the Board of Canvassers therein mentioned as relates to the office of county surrogate therein mentioned. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the county of Warren to be affixed this 21st day of November in the year of our Lord 2022, signed by Gloria A. Decker, Chairman of the Board of County Canvassers, and attested to by myself, Holly Mackey. And of course, Mike was sworn in due to vacancy laws. He was sworn in on November 30th, so he is already our official surrogate.
Next, the certification.
Okay. It was a big year this year, a lot of county, I think almost every county office this year. Okay. Certificate of election, a statement, we can do it all together. A statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county of Warren on the 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2022 for the election of county commissioner. The said Board does determine that the above-mentioned election, Jason J. Sarnowski, was elected by the majority of votes cast. I do certify that in the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the determination of the Board of Canvassers therein mentioned as relates to the county commissioner therein mentioned. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the county of Warren to be affixed this 21st day of November in the year of our Lord 2022, signed by Gloria A. Decker, Chairman of the Board of County Canvassers, and attested to by myself, Holly Mackey, Warren County Clerk.
Next, the, I'm sorry, oath of office, Jason, by our side here. Like that, please.
Okay, please raise your right hand. I, Jason J. Sarnowski.
I, Jason J. Sarnowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of Warren County Commissioner.
Perform all the duties of the office of Warren County Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chesla?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. Sarnowski?
Here.
Okay, next, I need a motion appointing the Director of the Warren County Board of Commissioners.
I move reappoint Lori Chesla as the Director of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Warren for the year 2023.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sarnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Chesla?
Yes.
Next, we have the oath of office for the Director by Congressman Thomas Kane.
My family is sick, so I brought my little friend.
I.
I, Lori Chesla.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will.
And the governments established in the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States.
And and in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of Warren County Commissioner Director.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There with me, it's been a while, so. All right, so next up. I'd like to entertain a motion for the appointment of James R. Kern III as Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Warren for the year 2023.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Sarnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Chesla?
Yes.
Congratulations. Administrator, may we take the rest of the resolutions as one?
Yes, ma'am, 15 through 30.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to move 15 through, are you up to now? 31.
No, 30.
30.
Oh, 30, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Good, roll call. Mr. Sarnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Chesla?
Yes.
To our list, now that we've gone through the business of the meeting. I would first like to thank our dignitaries that are here today. We have in the galley up here, we have our clerk, Holly Mackey, we have our prosecutor, Jim Pfeifer, we have our new surrogate, Mike Dougherty, and our newest Senator, Doug Steiner, what's your name? Oh, I'm sorry. And our Congressman-elect Tom Kane. If any of you would like to speak. We also have the Honorable Judge Shanahan here. Thank you very much. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our department heads, if you could stand up if you're in the audience. I'll go through them, we have Calvin Isco, Ken McCarthy, Bill Duffy, Bob Seidey, Courtney Tierney, Scott Byrd, Art Charlton, Emily Hammer, Marie Waters, Melissa Pritchett, Kim Francisco, Dennis Riley, Tom Nygros, Lauren Byrd, and Tom Thorpe. Thank you so much for all you do for our county, and thank you for attending today. At this point in time, I would like to ask any municipal mayors and council members to stand up now. You know who you are. Thank you so much for coming. If anybody would like to say any, a few words, feel free to now. Good. We also have in the audience Steve Lonigan, he's a former Bogota Mayor from Bergen County. Thank you for coming today. We also have a lot of people from our, our partnering services like DASAC, and we have the College Foundation members here, and we have the President of our college here and the College Foundation, and members from our VOTEC Board. Thank you very much for coming today, we appreciate all you do. What is next?
You three can leave.
Yeah, we can, we can actually leave. So now, this will be a chance where all of us will get to say a few words. And Jason, since you're newly back, you get to go first.
Did you want to start?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Man, a couple curveballs.
I know, all right, sorry. Blame Alex.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Director, and congratulations. As I begin my fifth term as a Freeholder slash Commissioner, I want to start by thanking those that have made this dream possible. First, my wonderful family, led by my wife Tammy, and my wonderful children, Jason and Skylar. Thank you so much for all you guys. With their never-ending support, they make everything I do possible. I want to thank our new surrogate, Mike Dougherty, for swearing me in now for the fifth time. Can't believe you forgot you were going to do it. It's been since five times, buddy. Mike is my good luck charm, and I'm superstitious, and he's always brought me luck into my next term, and I hope he's done it again. I also want to thank my fellow commissioners, Lori and Jim. We have the hardest-working Commissioner Board, and certainly, in my opinion, the best county in the state of New Jersey. I want to thank all of my friends and the volunteers in Warren County that have done so much for us. They are the backbone of everything we do. I want to thank the hard-working employees in the county. Without their successes, we would not be successful. And finally, I want to thank the voters of Warren County for their constant faith in in me. Their trust that I hold their values as my values is what drives me to work hard each and every day. And I've been reflecting on all that hard work over the last 12 years and how much we have accomplished over that time. When I started, the county was in the middle of a housing recession with an unsustainable budget and increasing debt. My early years as Freeholder were spent riding the ship, reducing the size of county government and giving our voters control over their debt. After that, reducing spending to the lowest amount in a decade became easy. We eventually eliminated county debt and created a sustainable, controllable budget that can and has weather changes in the economy, a pandemic, and countless curveballs thrown at us by an out, by out-of-control state spending. At the same time, we have preserved thousands of acres of farmland and open space, we have helped build one of the most successful county colleges in the country, and we've created a strong capital infrastructure and county government that is one of the most admired in the state. And with all that and all we have accomplished, I feel that the challenges that we have faced are the easy ones, and the hardest battles that we have are still ahead of us. Because the challenges of the past were the ones that we had fully in our control, but the challenges of the future are the ones that are being thrust upon us. It was easy to eliminate debt when we put voted, the voters in charge of their borrowing and save for future projects, but without, with the out-of-control state spending, double-digit health and pension increases, pushing the local burden, or the burden on local governments, controlling the cost of government continues to remain a challenge, especially for our municipalities. The county wisely saw these increases coming and got out of the state health benefits plan, and next year, we will have a budget that does not increase taxes for healthcare costs and will not push that burden onto our employees. We met, we met that challenge and we faced it, and now we're trying to help the municipalities face their challenges. It's easy for us to create a strong education system in Warren County with our county college and county technical school by educating for the jobs of the future, but the state continues to push an agenda that takes critical education time away from subjects like reading and mathematics, and focuses their radical liberal agenda in our schools, which is why New Jersey school test scores continue to decline. I will continue to fight for our children's education and our parental rights in that education so that we can have a say in what our children are learning. It was easy for the county commissioners to support our public safety and our Second Amendment rights. We asked the courts to address the backlog of carry permits, and we support the prosecutor's office to go after criminals, especially those that are targeting our children. Meanwhile, the state continues to pass laws that make it easier on our criminals and unconstitutional restrictions on our Second Amendment rights. I will always stand up for our residents' public safety and their right to protect themselves. Finally, Warren County has continued to push for proper planning and stronger laws that support cooperation in the planning process in municipalities to ensure that towns are not overburdened by development, but it has become obvious that the state is focusing on addressing issues that do not exist, like the rock fall on Route 80, while ignoring important issues that do exist, like deficient intersections and overdevelopment. Warren County will continue to work with all our municipalities and work towards developing a traffic plan that considers all of our towns' concerns and directs trucks off our local and county roads as quickly as possible and onto the state and federal roads where they belong. I will, I will be addressing all these issues by keeping true to my values, the values that got me here, by remembering that bigger, more intrusive, and expensive government is never the answer, by remembering that we have a strong constitution for, that allows us to protect ourselves and what we believe in, and by working with others that share these values. That is what I've always done, that is what has made us strong in Warren County despite the challenges that the state puts on us, and that's how I will continue to lead in Warren County into the future. I thank you all for your support. God bless you and God bless Warren County. Thank you.
Commissioner Kern, would you like to?
Happy New Year, New Year, everyone. I was going to follow in the footsteps of someone we lost this past year, Kevin O'Neill. He used to come up here and just say, "Happy New Year," and sit down, but I don't have anywhere near the popularity that that gentleman had, so I can't do that, so unfortunately you'll have to hear me speak for a little while. First, let me say congratulations to our newest director. I know that the first couple meetings are always difficult and nerve-wracking, but I will say to you that you and I had a meeting together when we were both municipal officials in Lopacong Township when I was mayor, and it can't be as bad as that, so just remember that meeting and it'll never be that bad.
Never.
Also, I want to thank Jason for his past year of leadership. Last year was not easy at all, there were things that the county was dealing with from a legal perspective that were very difficult, and I know that he was constantly on the phone advocating for the taxpayers of Warren County, so for that, I'm thankful and appreciate all the work and time that you've put in. I'd also like to congratulate, we have some similar faces in different places this year, and I just wanted to congratulate them. First being our surrogate, surrogate Dougherty, congratulations, look forward to working with you in this new capacity, it's going to be great. Our new Senator, Doug Steinhardt, already day one, his first day in the legislature. If you have any question on where he stands, he's already standing up for our values and our rights in Trenton. I encourage you to look up the first vote that he already took, and you know where Doug stands, and I look forward to having him representing us in Trenton. And finally, how nice is it to have a Congressman sitting in our reorganization room? It's been too long that we haven't had that, and I think Tom Kane Jr. has been in Warren County more than some of our prior representatives when they were in Congress, so we look forward to having you in Washington and advocating for us down there, so really appreciate that. As Commissioner Sarnowski said, Warren County has done so much with respect to fiscal responsibility. You know, we are one of the most responsible governments in the state of New Jersey, we essentially have no debt, and I think we're going to continue to move in that direction over the next years. As far as the things that I'm really excited about for this year is, we have, Warren County has so much good representation throughout the state and the country. We have with us today Mayor Tim McDonough, who sits on many boards and is an advocate for us in Trenton. Like I said, Warren County has a fearless leader in Doug Steinhardt down in Trenton. We have Senator Oraho in the north part of our county still representing us, and Assemblyman DeMaio is the minority leader, so Warren County really has some strong representation. And I myself am now honored to follow in the footsteps of Freeholder Gardner and serving on the NJAC Executive Board, the New Jersey Association of Counties, where I'll continue to advocate for issues affecting counties that the state is putting on undue regulations for us, so I really look forward to doing that. The last thing I just want to close with today is that, as a former mayor, I know that what the county has done over the past few years has been, you know, working and trying to establish strong relationships with our municipalities. I know that the, the regulations and bureaucracy that comes out of Trenton makes your job so hard to do when you're dealing with such small amounts of staff in your, in your communities, so I understand that. But what I, I have a challenge to our towns, and it's to help encourage and tell your residents, you know, make them understand what the role of the different levels of government are. The county is not an appellate court, we can't overrule you. New Jersey is a home rule state. Take that challenge and run with it. You have control of your own destinies, and please take the challenge into 2023, because I think if we, if the state of New Jersey had elected leaders like we have in our municipalities in Warren County, we'd be in a much better state. So really appreciate all the work that everyone does here. I look forward to taking on these challenges in 2023 and wish you all Happy New Year, so thank you and God bless.
I have to say, thank you, Jim, for reminding me of that awful meeting. Hopefully, nothing will ever be that bad again. Anyways, good afternoon, and thank you all for attending our 2023 reorganization meeting. I do want to give a special thanks to my colleagues, Commissioners Kern and Sarnowski, for putting their faith in me to lead the Board this year. I am excited and thrilled to be doing so, and I'm very grateful for their support and their teamwork. We are truly a great team, and I am lucky to serve with them. I would also like to thank Congressman-elect Tom Kane Jr. for swearing me in today. I am happy, very happy, for his recent win, and know he will do a fantastic job in DC for us. I had the pleasure of campaigning with him in 2020, and I can attest to his work ethic and his desire to make a difference for us. I would also like to take a moment to give congratulations to just about everybody who ran this year, because everybody but Jim and I ran this year, Jason, Holly, Jim, our Sheriff, who unfortunately can't be here, Mike Dougherty, who's now our surrogate, and also, of course, Congressman-elect Kane, and my friend Doug, who is, was elected at a special convention and is our next state Senator, very excited about that. I'd also like to thank my friends, I have to say. I'd also like to thank my friends, I have to say, for those of you who know, I've been sick for like the last month, and I finally infected most of my family, so, and my daughter is away, I could have dragged my son here, but he just got engaged to his girlfriend, Erin, on Friday night, so I'm giving him a pass, I'm very excited about that. So what I did was, I brought my other family here. This year, we lost a very good friend of ours, Mary, and we've become a family, and we're all here for each other, and I'm so glad that you are here, and I'm so glad that Scott, you are here to hold the Bible, thank you very, very much. So they say you should start a speech with a joke or a quote, or maybe both, so I'll give you both. First, the joke, you may look at us up here and think I'm the mom of the group, and usually that is true, but sometimes, I must admit, I am a willing participant in some of the harmless shenanigans these guys pull on each other, and those of you who know, yes, it's usually one more than the other. So I was going to be a prankster today and tell everyone that my first initiative as the first female Commissioner and Director would be to put an excessive amount of throw pillows in every office, but A, I was worried no one would think it was a joke because I have an excessive amount of throw pillows in my house, and also, Alex might have a heart attack thinking about the cost of that, so we don't want that. I will save my pranks for later in the year. But all kidding aside, I am very honored to be the first female Commissioner and Director. Now, that's not saying much because we just got our title changed in 2021, but it was only forty years ago, in 1983, that the first female ever, Irene Smith, was elected to be a Freeholder in Warren County. Only three other women have been Freeholders since then, Anne Stone, Susan Dickey, and yes, me, because I was actually elected as a Freeholder, my title changed when I was sworn in, and it has been over twenty years since we have had a female Director. I personally do not think that your gender regulates whether you will be a good leader, as leadership is not a quality that is determined just by your DNA, but I am also aware of the low numbers of women in government positions even until today. I am honored and grateful to be part of the positive statistics of female politicians. Now the quote, to quote Vince Lombardi, "Leaders are made, they are not born, they are made by hard effort, which is the price which all of us must pay to achieve any goal that is worthwhile." This is true for both men and women, not only from their own hard work, but those of them before them and those of them that support them. As a female elected official, I want to highlight the hard work of the women before me, because this year also marks the 150th anniversary of when Susan B. Anthony was arrested, tried, and convicted of registering and voting in the previous year's presidential election. Also, 110 years ago, in 1913, New Jersey's own Alice Paul helped form the Congressional Union for Women's Suffrage to lobby for the constitutional right to vote, which they achieved seven years later. If that doesn't constitute hard work for the benefit of all of us, I don't know what does. I am very thankful for all of the female leaders who paved the way before me, and I hope to be an inspiration to those who will come after me. Now that we've had our history lesson, let's move on to the future. As Leader of the Board of the Warren County Commissioners for 2023, I promise you that I will work hard with Jim and Jason for everyone in our county. We will continue to focus on the issues that help us maintain our Warren County way of life. Thankfully, our county is in very good shape due to the work of my current colleagues and those who served before us. We are likely, as Jason has mentioned, the only county that will not have a health cost, a healthcare cost increase due to the proactive measures that they took years ago to get out of the state benefit plan. As others across the state are facing huge increases of nearly 25%, we will not have any. Additionally, our pay-as-you-go methodology is allowing us to improve buildings, such as the courthouse we are in now, and build new buildings without incurring a debt burden for our taxpayers. We are currently working on the plans for the new Department of Human Services building, reconfiguration and upgrades to our admin building, and we've begun the process of planning for renovations to the Catherine Dixon-Hoffman branch of our amazing county library system. We will continue to enhance our buildings and services to meet the needs of our residents today and those of the future, as we are looking to implement solar power for our buildings where we can, and including EV charging stations to service our electrified fleet in the years to come. We are doing all of this with an eye on the bottom line, of course, we understand that our dollars are really your dollars, and they do not grow on trees. Education is a key to success, and I always joked that Dr. Austin could read my mind, whenever I suggest something new for our college, it is already in process, I am not kidding. The improvements of the WCC, the improvements of WCCC staff and board are making to our already top-rated county college, or all I could dream of and more, they are putting us on the map to be the educators for the jobs of the future, including future support of our agricultural community and businesses. Our county VOTEC High School is just as successful in delivering a great education along with technical skills to our students, and they continue to grow and adapt to the needs of our community, all by streamlining their processes to maximize their budget dollars. All of our volunteer boards are filled with dedicated volunteers looking to do the best they can for our county, we cannot thank them enough. If you're interested in joining them, check out our website, we'd love to have you. Our employees are hardworking and the cream of the crop of the state of New Jersey, and they are a major reason why this county is the best place to live, in my humble opinion. The pandemic pushed them all to the limit, and they not only met, but exceeded expectations on those challenges. As we come out of the pandemic, we still have a lot to deal with, particularly in human services, the last few years have not been easy for many, and our services are being utilized more than ever. Thank you to all of our employees for helping those that need it most, and our local partners who assist in those efforts. My goals for the year are to continue to be proactive and creative to preserve our way of life here in Warren County. Communication is a major component of that, and we are currently working on investigating what upgrades are needed for our emergency management systems, as well as studying the current state of cellular service in our county and petitioning our cell providers for upgrades and enhancements. I am very happy to announce that our official cellular drive test will be occurring this month, and this will help us pinpoint where we need upgrades the most. The lack of broadband altogether in parts of our county is another major focus for us, and we are presently working feverishly with the NJABPU and their consultants to challenge the new FCC broadband coverage map, which needs a lot of challenging, and we need to do this by January 13th, 2023. Mayors, I have emailed you already about this, and I will continue to harass you, just giving you a warning, but it's for the greater good. The more money we can get into New Jersey, the more we can hopefully get into Warren County. I've been in touch with our two state Senators, Senator O'Roh and Senator Steinhardt, which is funny, I forgot what it's like to work with Doug, he gave me a whole list of ten things to do. I appreciate that, and they are committed to helping us get the funding we need so we can get the whole county online once and for all. The pandemic highlighted the lack of broadband in our area, and if the federal government wants to finally give New Jersey back our federal tax dollars, we must do what we can to truly get what we deserve. Beyond improving our means of communication, we will also improve on what we communicate to all, whether it be about our services, events, or businesses, we want our public to be well-informed. We will continue to promote and support our local businesses that help us maintain our Northwest Jersey rural character. We will fight hard against any state legislation that hurts us, and we will work with our legislators to craft legislation that helps us. A big event on the horizon that will help us promote Warren County, our towns, and our businesses all throughout the state is the upcoming bicentennial celebration. In 2025, Warren County will be 200 years old, and we are planning a multi-year-long party to celebrate. We are looking not only to highlight our history, but our present and our future, and we have so much planned, if you'd like to join us in the planning, please join us, we would love your help. We know we have challenges ahead too, and we will meet those head-on and do all we can to do what is best for our county. I'll never pretend to know all the answers because that is not how you learn and grow. My door will always be open to hear your ideas and suggestions, and I look forward to working with everyone in the upcoming year. I'll end this very long speech with one more quote, this time, from the great Walt Disney. Around here, however, we don't look backwards for very long, we keep moving forward, opening new doors and doing new things, because we are curious, and curiosity keeps leading us down new paths. Our curiosity will help us find innovative ideas to meet our goals and maintain our character, and the team we have assembled to serve our residents is curious and forward-looking. Our future in Warren County is bright, and I am very honored to be a part of it. God bless you all and Happy New Year.
Alright, would anybody else like to go to the podium and speak?
I would just like to say one more thing before we leave, we do have, everybody's gathering at Tipton's after this for some food, so we'd love to have you all there. And I guess, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Nope.
Good?
We're good. We adjourn.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.